Well, we've taken weather prediction and discussion to a new level, even for our area.
I'll tell you, you know, maybe we all have some hidden desire to be a meteorologist here or something. I don't know. I like Ian's story better, though. Just have a rock, paint it, turn it around.
Yeah, then put it in your pocket.
Take it with you, any way you want to go.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, folks, in your packets, there are the comments as well as different color sheets with staff's recommendations of possible motions to approve and not approve.
We're going live.
All right, Scott, we got everything?
Sir, we are good to go.
Fantastic. All right. Welcome, everyone, to this morning's meeting of the Burlington City Council. This is our special meeting held on Thursday, March 18th, 2021. Due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. It's also being livestreamed on our city YouTube channel at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having any technical or connection difficulties throughout the process of this meeting, we ask that you contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman. You there, David?
Here.
Very good. Erm City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly. Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Very good. At this time, we recognize our City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning today's agenda items.
No.
No.
Thank you.
Next, we have a number of unfinished business items. These were continued from our Tuesday meeting on March 16th for the sole purpose of allowing additional written comments to be submitted for a 24-hour period beyond the close of that meeting pursuant to NCGS 166A 19.24E. We'll begin with item one. A public hearing has been continued to consider an application to amend a conditional rezoning that was approved by the Burlington City Council on September 18th, 2018. The request is to increase the number of single-family lots from 219 to 241. The property is located at 1722 Shamrock Drive, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 130754. At this time, we will resume our public hearing on this item to receive written public comments. Clerk, did we receive any written comments on this?
We did receive one written comment. That comment was from Dana Stewart of 1443 Monroe Holt Road in Burlington. All of the written public comments received were provided to City Council prior to today's meeting, and they will be included in the record.
Very good. Thank you, Clerk. So this concludes our public hearing on this. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Don't move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to close from a public hearing from Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to close? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. So that closes our public hearing on item one. Staff has provided council members with potential recommended motions to approve or deny this item on the green sheet in your packets. Do I hear a motion from council regarding this item?
Mayor, I've got a question of clarification here.
Go ahead.
Of course, I have all of the options out in front of me. I'm prepared to make the motion, but Jim brought up the issue the other night about when we first took action on this, that the comprehensive plan was, you know, deemed to have been amended to conform to that action. Therefore, you know, I think it'd be appropriate to use option one instead of option two. Option one is consistent. Option two is an inconsistent statement, so. Mike Dunn, is that right? We should go with option one because now it really actually would be considered consistent. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct, sir. Yes.
Okay, Mayor, if you want me to, I'm prepared to make a motion if that's acceptable.
It is.
The City Council chooses, the City Council believes this request is consistent with the destination Burlington Comprehensive Plan and moves to approve. I approved the request with the stated conditions to amend a conditional rezoning that was approved by the Burlington City Council on September 18th, 2018. The request is to increase the number of single-family lots from 219 to 241. The property is located at 1722 Shamrock Drive, formerly Shamrock Golf Course, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 130754. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to have rural residential agricultural uses. The property is contiguous with residential zoning, and the proposed use would rezone from our 15th Residential District to CR Conditional Residential District approved by the Burlington City Council on September 18th, 2018. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Plan calls for the rural residential agricultural uses, and the proposed user is compatible with the uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning in the area.
Thank you, council member. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion has been properly seconded. Do I hear any questions or discussion regarding this item? All right, with that, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. All right, any further items on this one? With that, we'll move to item two on our agenda. Public hearing has been continued to consider an application to rezone from Medium MI, Medium Industrial District, to LDR, Low Density Residential District. The property is located at the south side of Hatchery Road, approximately 2,200 feet east of Alamance Road, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 121184, and being a portion of 121183. The City Council will now resume its public hearing, continued from the March 16th, 2021, meeting pursuant to NCGS 166A-19.24E. Clerk, did we receive any written public comments on this one?
For the record, there were no written comments received.
Very good. Recognizing no additional written comments, do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion to close made by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to close? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, staff has provided on your blue sheets, motions to approve or deny this item. Do I hear a motion from council regarding item two on our agenda? Any questions from council?
Mayor, I will make a motion if acceptable. At first, I'd like to make a comment that Mr. Mopitz's remarks the other night were really what Lardet's call is, obviously, a very good equitable argument, but I think probably this body is more concerned about probably, you know, the legal aspects of it and the legal precedent. And I understand that Mr. Harmon is willing to assume the risk of, you know, whatever goes forward, but even with that, I think probably, you know, you know, this change would be inconsistent with a comprehensive plan, so therefore I move, I move we deny the request to rezone from MI Medium Industrial District to LDR Low Density Residential District. The properties are located on the south side of Hatchery Road, approximately 2,200 feet east of Alamance Road, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 121184, and being a portion of 121183. Motion is based upon the inconsistency of the proposed rezoning with the Comprehensive Plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to have industrial uses and is located adjacent to industrial zoning. The requested zoning is not necessary for this location. The action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the requested rezoning is incompatible with existing land uses in the area. The current zoning is preferable for the area.
Thank you, council member Ward, for that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to deny has been made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any discussion or questions regarding this motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed to deny this zoning with the votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. This concludes item two on our agenda. At this time, we'll move to item three. A public hearing has been continued to consider an application to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential to OI Office Institutional District. The property is located at the southeast corner of Grand Oaks Boulevard and Huffman Mill Road, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 112469. At this time, the City Council will resume its public hearing, continued from March 16th, 2021, City Council meeting pursuant to NCGS 166A-19.24E. Clerk, did we receive any written comments on this one?
For the record, there were no written comments received.
Very good. With recognizing there were no additional written comments, council, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Oh, boo.
Second.
Motion to close from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to close? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. But that staff has provided recommendations for approval and denial motions on the pink sheet in your packet. Do I hear a motion from council?
Mayor, I'm making a motion. Sorry, go ahead, Jim.
I would make a motion that we approve this request based on staff's feedback and unanimous approval from P&amp;Z. That this council believes that the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and move to recommend approval by council. I move that we approve this request to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential to OI Office Institutional. This property is located southeast corner of Huffman Mill Road and Grand Oaks Boulevard, referenced in Alamance County Tax ID Numbers 112469. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the Comprehensive Plan and that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to have rural residential agricultural. Request is compatible with the proximity of OI Office Institutional and COI Conditional Office Institutional District in the area. This action is reasonable in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Plan calls for rural residential agricultural uses in the area. Request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions or comments regarding the motion?
I have a question. And while I had, in other words, it was, let me look back at my notes here. It was it's, you know, notes, it says, it's while it's inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. I guess, which, Jim, which option did you read from? Was it one or two? One. I think, Mike, do we need to go with two, or can we just substitute the word inconsistent with consistent? Maybe I'm confused here, so.
No, it's inconsistent with the land use plan, but it is compatible with uses in the area.
Okay, so the motion as read is no problem, right? Or do we need to just substitute the word?
The word is correct, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I would, Jim, if you're agreeable, I'll just, I'll ask you, you know, you amend your motion, substitute inconsistent with consistent, and I think that would cure whatever the deal is. What, is that correct, Mike?
Right, the Comprehensive Plan calls for the area to be rural residential agricultural. Current plan does.
Yeah, absolutely. I've got no problems with that. I'll amend the motion to be inconsistent where I said consistent. Thank you, Bob.
Can I just interject real quick? I apologize, but I think it would be best to just read option two because it also references amending the Comprehensive Plan.
I think Attorney Huffman would like to include something too. Attorney?
It'd be better just read it all, Nolan.
I think so.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure our record is right here.
Counselor Ward, we'll just take a moment for our attorney Hoffman to.
You read the consistence and statement as it's written, the correct one. Mr. Kirkman's correct.
Okay. All right.
So the motion would be that this council believes the request is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan but moves to approve, and that the City Council should declare the Comprehensive Plan shall be modified through this recommended approval. I move we approve this request to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential to OI Office Institutional. Property is located at the southeast corner of Huffman Mill Road and Grand Oaks Boulevard, referenced in Alamance County Tax ID Number 112469. The motion is based upon inconsistency of the proposed rezoning with the Comprehensive Plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for the area to have rural residential and agricultural uses. The request is compatible with the proximity of OI Office Institutional and COI Conditional Office Institutional Districts. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Plan calls for rural residential agricultural uses in the area. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Very good. Counselor Owen, are you amendable to that adjustment?
Yes, yes.
So the amended motion has been made by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Owen, to approve this item as inconsistent. Any questions or discussion regarding the motion?
I just think, Mayor, this is a, the recommendation in terms of what's being proposed is an ideal use at that particular location in that corner. It's just simply, that's a piece of property as you go along the south side of that road there that I think can see substantial use going forward.
Yeah, it does make a lot of sense based on the development we've seen around the campus there.
That's right, yes.
Any other counsel comments or questions regarding this item and the motion? With that, all those in favor of the motion to approve is inconsistent, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. That concludes item three on our agenda. Item four on our agenda, public hearing has been continued to consider an application to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential to PD Plan Development. The property is located at the east side of St. Mark's Church Road, just south of the terminus of World Retreat Road and approximately 500 feet north of Boone Station Drive, addressed as 1408 St. Mark's Church Road and referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106976. City Council will now resume its public hearing, continued from March 16th, 2021. And clerk, have we received any written public comments per NCGS 166A-19.24E?
Yes, there were three additional written comments received. David and Lisa Bose of 1318 Berkshire Road in Burlington. Donna R. Campbell of 1344 Berkshire Road in Burlington. And Kyle King of 1345 Berkshire Road in Burlington. All of these written public comments were received and have been provided to City Council prior to today's meeting, and they will be included in the record.
Very good. Thank you, Clerk. Recognizing those three additional comments have been received, no further comment will be received at this point. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion to close made by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to close? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. At this time, staff has provided council members suggested motions on the yellow sheet of paper in your packet. These are both motion options to approve and deny this item. Do I hear a motion from council?
Mayor, could I ask just, Mr. Nun or Mr. Kirkman in reference to the compatibility to our comp plan?
Yeah.
Is there an issue here?
With, let me pull up the land use map. I've got it right here. Can you see that?
No, we can't see your screen. Scott, can you check that Mike is a co-host presenter?
Yes, sir, he is. He has permissions.
It's charted, there it goes.
There we go. Screen's coming up now. There we go, we can see it.
Okay. You see the transition, which means as you get further away, that's the regional commercial. It bleeds into the medium density residential. It is compatible as far as a transition use, if you will. That's, I believe, the applicant mentioned that the other night, as far as between the regional commercial, which is right now I am crossing into a medium density, which is the yellow behind it. So this would be a planned development with high-density use in between versus, you know, as mentioned, you know, it could be retail uses or higher intensity uses there.
So it is compatible. It could be rezoned in kind of either direction towards the medium density or towards the higher commercial.
That's correct.
And so basically that staff believes this is a good transition, kind of.
Yes, we do.
And Mike, while you're there, the request from the Bose family in reference to the the fence that they're referencing in their letter, is that something is part of the proposal for Mr. Riddle?
Currently, right now, the way it's proposed has been submitted, and the narrative for the plan development is that there would be connection, would be connection, public connection to the Greenway from Berkshire and Willow Oak. So if that is something that council does not desire, we need to make that clear in the condition with the applicant. I believe the applicant's on the call. He would need to offer that as well, but right now, it says that there will be pedestrian activity between the residential neighborhood and the Greenway.
That is pedestrian only, not vehicular traffic, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. No vehicular traffic, just pedestrian access is the terms that are used.
Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, did you have a question?
Yes, similar to what Harold asked. What kind of risk is there to not having connectivity there, at least with pedestrians?
The, well, that's just from a TRC, from a technical reviews perspective, from a public connection, we would always require that. That's our typical standard to require connection, especially from a public street to a public greenway. So that was acceptable to TRC, which is the concept plan and this narrative have already gone through TRC's review. So that was compatible with what we would request, that we therefore approved it. What developed out of the neighborhood discussion and the applicant's discussion is a proposal to not allow that to happen. So that would have to be specifically something in this approval for rezoning to not allow that access. If that makes sense.
But per our UDO, Mike, the desire and kind of neighborhood development is always to improve the number of kind of nodes and connections within a neighborhood, correct?
Correct. Yeah, again, that would be our, that would be our regular response is to connect that through a technical review process.
People like going from, directly from point A to point B, so.
If you recall, the comment on that, if I can, was, you know, valid, they do have access to a greenway just to the north. I think it's a long peeler that gives them access to the park as well. That was just a comment that was made. But I did want to be clear on that. Currently, we would, TRC would continue with our request to require the public greenway to the public street for pedestrians only.
I think just a matter of public expectation would not, through the UDO and through our greenway plan, I mean, isn't it just generally understood by the public in general that all of these are going to connect?
That's our plan calls for, shows public connections. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, while I understand the request by the particular neighborhood, it just seems odd that we would have a plan in place that we would restrict it in one area. It just appears odd to me. I think if we would do that, that sets a sort of unusual precedent going forward. I agree with you.
Yeah, that's my concern as well.
So we would just, are we saying if we just approved it as presented as a as the PD plan that it is, the UDO and staff would just work through this and follow the greenway plan and our UDO as written?
That's correct. That's what's currently in the offer from the applicant is to provide pedestrian access from Berkshire and Willow Oak to the public greenway. That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Or do I hear a motion?
And Mike, in staff's opinion, that this request is consistent with the comp plan?
That's correct, yes.
Well, I'll make a motion then that in reference since the Planning and Zoning Commission believes this request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and moves to recommend approval. I move we recommend approval of this request to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential to PD Plan Development District for the use of a 205-unit multifamily development. Property is located at 1408 St. Mark's Church Road, referenced as Alamance Tax Identification Numbers 106976. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the Comprehensive Plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to have commercial uses. Request is compatible with adjacent residential uses, and the proposed plan complies with adopted City of Burlington Greenway plan and bikeway plan. This action is reasonable in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Plan calls for commercial uses in this area, and the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses of the area.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion to approve as consistent made by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Tem Hikes. Any questions or comments regarding this motion? I do want to comment, we had talked a little about this on Tuesday, and I appreciate the way kind of all the work and public comment that we put together during the UDO process has helped to shape this plan development. I think Councilmember Butler had commented on that as well on Tuesday, which it's encouraging to see kind of the way the community's vision for how future development would appear in Burlington, including kind of the neighborhood connectivity, the quality of fit and finish, the availability of green space, the preservation of landscaping buffers, trees, greenery in the city, kind of, all those desires from the community came together into that UDO to kind of say, this is the menu of things we want to see for good future development within infill in the city. And I appreciate the developer's desire to, or willingness to basically shape their development to meet the expectations of our community using this plan development process. I think this is very encouraging as to a test study of, this is what we wanted to have happen, and it really is what has been proposed with this development.
I also think, Mayor, as Mr. Butler had mentioned, I think previously, obviously the UDO process was, was long and sometimes painful, but it involved a number of different people who had the opportunity to express their opinions. It appears as we go forward with this, that the UDO is allowing us to make best and proper use of the property that we have. And as Mr. Butler had mentioned earlier, with the state rule and in terms of lack of annexation going forward, at some point in time, density becomes more and more of an issue that we have to, to consider in terms of, of being able to grow our tax base to support the services and citizens are requesting.
Yeah, to Harold's point, without density, we don't have a sustainable model anymore.
Yep.
And, and that's, that's a critical piece based on legislation that does not allow city-initiated annexation. So, you know, I don't think, I don't think, I certainly didn't think of that at the time, but I am so thankful that it worked the way it did, because density is going to be our lifeline moving forward.
Especially when it helps us leverage kind of community assets we've already invested in, like the park is just across the street, and one, this development allows for increased pedestrian access over there, but two, it, it supports folks being able to use the park as well as support the retail and other commerce activities just around the corner from it. So it really is a good fit for the area.
Yeah.
Someone in, in the early 1990s that was part of acquiring that property, that property at that time was seen to be way out, way out there. So you can see that as time changes in terms of the growth of the community and it, you know, I think that relates back now to the UDO that, you know, that really makes sense.
Wasn't all that long ago that it was rolling pastures out there, and it's changed quite a bit.
That's right.
Any other council comments or questions regarding the motion to approve as consistent? All right, with that, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. That continues our regular, or concludes our regularly scheduled items on today's meeting, I almost said tonight's meeting. Any further council comments at this time?
I've got a, I've got a question, Mayor, if you could. I, I don't know exactly how it was left when we talked about looking at our local elections, and I believe we asked the staff to put it up together and bring it back to us. I don't know whether it was first meeting in April or just what it was. I, I would like to ask that we not discuss that or ask staff to put anything in final form until we know what the general assembly is going to do about our current elections. I feel it'd be, I feel like it'd be a little premature, and I think that ought to be considered with whatever they decide. So I, I know staff is unusually busy with other items. I'm hoping we'd have some consensus to just sort of put that off until we know what the general assembly is going to do. So let me just stop for that, and if anybody else has any thoughts, I would ask you to share them with everybody.
Other thoughts about that?
No, I agree, I agree.
I agree with Bob as well, but I'd also like to see, there are several different issues around elections that we have talked about through the years and really haven't tackled at all. So I would like to see some kind of, if we have some kind of retreat that would give us the time to discuss what those options are and hear some information, maybe from the school of government or others, to give us some insight into what kinds of, what it would be like if we made those changes. But I think putting it off till we know what the general assembly is going to do would be wise.
Hardner and David, have, has there been any movement or response, or do you guys, have you guys got any information where the general assembly may be headed here?
Mr. Owen, I've not heard from anyone in our delegation with any, any follow-up to our letters. As you know, we prepared that letter for Representative Rydell, forwarded it to other two members of our delegation as well. They all acknowledged receipt, but I don't think there's any insight as to next steps of the general assembly. David?
Mayor Pro Tem Hikes mentioned that this might be a good topic for a retreat format type meeting, and I agree, this is kind of one of those deeper topics that needs kind of that discussion format. I know we've had a couple other items come up in the last few months that are kind of heavier discussion topics. Manager, would it be feasible, kind of, in the future, the next couple of months, to put together some type of retreat event? Maybe not a full day, but a partial day for us to dig into some of these topics?
We'd be happy to organize.
Would it, would it, I would feel more comfortable with that format if we, hopefully, we'll all be able to get together in person at some time in the not-so-distant future, but I would, I would prefer us be in person.
I would too.
David, have you heard anything from, from, from the legislature, from the legal side, from the constituents there?
Not pertaining to this election issue, I've not heard anything further than what was discussed at the last city council meeting.
So there's really been no movement at all, has it?
I'm not aware of it.
And, and Mr. Owen, I felt, you know, we, we obviously get briefings from North Carolina League municipalities and metro mayors weekly on, on various things in the legislature, and there haven't been any, any updates on that since our conversation.
Manager, I believe there's a format that staff has been looking at for possibly resuming physical meetings using a larger space such as the Kernodal Senior Center. Do you have any information regarding that, or would you be willing to bring back some information in our work session about how we might be able to utilize that, that concept for a retreat-style event in person?
Sure, I think, yeah, I think as, as we analyze our best facilities, sort of our place where you have the most room, I think we had, you know, contemplated this back in the spring of last year, if we did need to meet in person. The Kernodal Center gives us the most room for, you know, elbow room, good access, good parking, et cetera. I think some of our appointed boards and commissions that needed to meet in person due to technological issues or other reasons have met at Kernodal Center, and that seems to have worked well for them, as you all know, as you open up all those combined spaces, you've got some pretty good elbow room for social distancing. So we'll be happy to, if council's so, so inclined, we'll be happy to put some plans together for how we might organize in that space.
Counsel, okay, so we'll include that in our work session for April 5th, to hear some recommendations for how we might convene, and then at that time, we could discuss potential dates and items to include on that agenda. Does that sound reasonable?
Does to me.
Yeah, Hardner, are we okay on technology in terms of, to be able to, the video and so forth?
We, that, that room is well-designed with technology. We'll have to obviously get our teams in there to make sure, I think, if, if I'm understanding, part of the question is also making sure that we can broadcast out during the meeting. That'll be a new, a new task for us to figure out. We'll, I think we certainly have a team that can figure out how to do that, but yeah, we could, we'll do some trial runs in advance, but I believe we could. That facility's in, in good shape technology-wise, compared to some of our other larger facilities, it'll be a little bit more challenging technology-wise. Okay.
Very good. Any other council comments this morning? All right, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Oh, boo.
Motion to adjourn from Councilmember Ward. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, everyone, for your time this morning, and we hope you have a wonderful rest of your Thursday. Take care, everybody.
Let's say, thank you.
They say.
Be safe today.
Yeah. Keep an eye on those weather rocks, everyone.